Okay, it's time we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is May the 10th, Monday May the 10th, and this is our regular monthly board meeting, and we'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight. If there's anyone that wants to make a statement on citizen comments, they need to go up and sign in over there. That's over there on that table with Madam Burke.
It is.
Yeah. So, and we'll, we'll give you just about three minutes, I think, to state what your business is, and we've got a pretty heavy agenda tonight, so anybody that wishes to make a statement under citizen comments would do that. We will go ahead and do our prayer and pledges, as we always do, and Commissioner Bond's going to do the pledge, and Commissioner Allison's going to be the prayer, but we'll start off with a prayer.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We just ask for your guidance and your direction on all the decisions that we make for the citizens of McDowell County, and just ask you to bless our county, bless the health of each individual, and just be with us in the meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all had a chance to look at your minute, the minutes of what's placed aboard them.
My question, we approved the minutes from the 12, 16th, and 19th meetings overall.
Okay. Got a motion of second in discussion. All in favor, say aye. What about approval of the agenda? Everyone had a chance to look at it, hear a motion on it.
So I move.
Got a motion of a second in discussion. All in favor, say aye. Moving on to appointments tonight, we, under item A, we've got Mr. William Keller with us tonight to give us a COVID-19 update, so if you will, William, come to the podium, and the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present the update again. Today's date, 421, that the emergency operations center has been activated for the COVID-19 incident. Today we reported 70 positives. Our 14-day positivity rate is at 10%. Last week, 483 COVID tests were performed. This number in testing represents the highest number of testing that we've had since March 19th. We are recovering from our spike due to the Easter holiday and spring break. We're definitely on a downward trend from that surge, and seeing a downward trend across all of our metrics. Currently, we have zero outbreaks in long-term care facilities. Hospitalizations did see a spike after Easter and spring break, but we are starting to see a downward trend in those as well. The EOC has transitioned COVID-19 testing away from an EOC operation back to the Health Department by appointment only, as well as referrals to area clinics. We are in the process of transitioning our call centers and demobilizing some of our staff that we've been using on a temporary basis. When we look at vaccine distribution, current numbers as of today, 15,117 first doses, which represents 33% of the population, has received at least the first dose of the Pfizer or Moderna, fully vaccinated, 13,903, which is 30.4%. We're averaging 120 to 150 first-dose appointments or drive-ups on a weekly basis. That is a substantial decrease from where we were four to five weeks ago, when we were administering 1,000 to 1,200 first doses on a weekly basis. We have transitioned from our approach or our strategy of drive-up operations to more of community paramedics and mobile teams taking this out into the community to reach those homebound citizens, as well as those who essentially just receive the vaccination, whether it's convenience of where the mobile team sets up at in the individual communities, or those that have issues driving or riding to the actual vaccination clinic. This Friday will be our last clinic at Grace Community Church, and we will transition back to vaccinations being given at the local Health Department. This Friday, we will be offered first-dose Pfizer, as well as Johnson &amp; Johnson, which we have a limited supply on. This past weekend, the vaccination team was at the YMCA for a community event and assisting the Latinx community with vaccinations. We do see on other providers, and that's one of the reasons that we are in a demobilization phase at the EOC, because there are additional providers who have come online who have administered vaccinations, including the Ingalls Pharmacy, the Old Ford Pharmacy, as well as Walmart, and several other providers in McDowell. And for people who may have missed their second dose, and we know there's quite a few individuals who received first-dose Pfizer or Moderna who haven't showed back up for second dose, they can also call those pharmacies or walk into several of these locations and receive their second dose. As I stated today, or this week, will be the last week that we are at Grace Community Church. We'll forever be grateful for that church's hospitality in letting us use their facility since January. Their staff has been just so accommodating for the vaccination team. Not only have they provided use of their facilities, they've provided volunteers for each vaccination clinic. So, a huge thank you to Grace Community Church for all they've done to support the vaccination clinics. The whole community approach, we continue to utilize that, is for our homebound clinics, as well as our community clinics with the mobile teams. The partnerships certainly have mattered during this to allow that face-to-face interaction within the communities, the support from many of the community groups, and assisting us in getting these vaccinations out. When we look at our vaccination rate for fully vaccinated, as well as first dose, I should say partially vaccinated, where we're at in McDowell is 33%, Avery 36.3, Burke 28.4, Mitchell 31.3, Yancey 34.3, Buncombe 36.9, and Rutherford 25. Kind of in the middle, we certainly need that percentage to be higher when we look at what we want to see come fall and winter time, as far as the viral transmission in the community. Certainly at this time, we're on a downward trend, and our measures do look good. As I said, we are in the demo phase with the EOC. As far as the COVID-19 incident, I do suspect finishing vaccinations this week, my next report to you at the June meeting, we will be very close, if not have already deactivated the EOC. We're winding this operation down. As more providers have come online, the emergent-type situation for us as in the EOC is certainly declining, and I look forward to providing additional updates as we move along. It's been a long haul for the EOC, and the staff have been very resilient, and very grateful for all the support we've received from the board, the county staff, all the department directors. It's taken a whole community approach to manage what is the most complex incident that I've seen in my career. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, William. I've got one question. I noticed on my card when I got my second shot, it's got an expiration date on it, and a lot of the other people that I've mentioned that too, has showed me their cards which had nothing on them.
Some of the stickers that were printed actually had the lot number, and that lot number's expiration date on it, so that can be a little bit confusing. Some of the stickers didn't have that, that I've seen, but that is the lot number, the batch that the vaccine came out of, and its expiration.
And that's the dog.
That is correct. So the current, they're currently studying, and for an example, there is a group of individuals who had the antibodies drawn for the vaccine. They received Moderna back in January, and this occurred about a couple of weeks ago. It still shows very robust immunity, even out in the month of May, or the end of April, 1st of May. So, this is, there's no set timeframe at this point as to how long these vaccinations are good for. There's a lot of information to suggest that they're good for upwards of a year, but that exact timeframe is still not known.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the board do a resolution in honor of Grace Community and their support of our emergency management operations and their volunteers that were present on site to help Mr. Keller and his staff.
That's a great idea.
I'll second that.
Got a motion of second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Mr. Martin Keller. Next on the agenda, side B, it's introduction to the new transit director, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Woodin, and let him talk on that.
Jason, come on up. For about two months, we have been without a transit director, and so for the first couple of weeks, the remaining administrative staff of the department and the administrative staff of the county, being myself, and Ms. Bell, the finance director, and Ms. Presswood, the human resources director, not in that order, had been supporting the transit staff. And so definitely Ms. Presswood and Ms. Bell have been a great help over the last two months, assisting our administrative staff of transit, as well as the drivers during this time of vacancy. And so we're very pleased and honored to go through the process of hiring a selection of a new director, and that person is Jason Hollifield. And his first day was today, which is the time of this meeting. I said, "I'm so sorry, it was just the way it worked out." And he said, "No problem." I'm sure he can talk about his day, but we did have someone coming this afternoon with a concern about a recent experience, and it was real. And he thought I was pulling his leg for a while, so it was not the case, of course, but, so he's doing a great job, you know, on day one, but let him talk about himself and his experience.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm grateful for the opportunity. I look forward to serving the citizens of the county. And it didn't take me long to realize I was by no means walking into a disaster. Those folks over there have got a good handle on things, and, you know, you never know when you start a new job, what you'll be facing, but they have a very good system. Things are flowing well over there. So, my brain is a little bit overloaded after the first day of all the things that I thought through and were looking into, but I look forward to working with everyone. And again, I appreciate the opportunity. Just getting my feet wet, it'll take a while to get into the flow of things and see exactly where we are, but, but in my opinion, we're in a pretty good spot. Those ladies over there have really taken care of things very well.
Any questions, comments?
Just one comment, you know, looking forward to having that thing in the black within the first three weeks of you being here. You're lucky.
I have a black pen, so.
You're gonna make it then. Keep the black pen, right?
Thank you.
Good to have you. Well, thank you, Jason. Welcome aboard, and we look forward to lots of long, healthy years with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, moving along to item C, employee health insurance proposal. Ms. Maria Presswood's with us tonight, so we'll let her come to the podium and do her presentation.
All right. Thanks for having me. I'm also joined with Brian Flynn. Brian is with One Digital, our brokers, Morrow Insurance Partners, One Digital. They help them with analytics, logistics, and then just answering day-to-day questions for people like me. I call them a lot, so I appreciate them very much. They also provide an employee advocate that directly assists our employees answering the questions about coverage. They can help them straighten out any billing issues. It's a very hands-on partnership with them that they provide that we're very thankful for. Every year, they take an in-depth look at our current claims and trends to help us understand where we are currently and project where we may be headed. They help us determine whether or not being self-insured is still the most fiscally sound option for us, if our current claims administrator is still the best fit. They help us identify where some of our problem areas are. Our pharmacy costs have been one of those problem areas in the past few years. This renewal review that you all have in front of you is the result of our work with Morrow and One Digital to see what changes we can make to help address that. So, we'll start out on the third page, what they've provided. Now, this page lays out our claims and fixed costs. The second column, you'll see our actual costs so far through March. The third column has our projected costs through April, May, and June. The fourth column has those total together, as our actual and projected, to finish out the plan year. The fifth column is what our next plan year is projected to look like based on what we look like now. So this page just gives you an idea of where we are with our costs this year and what next year could look like for us if we remain at our current pace. If you have any questions about these large numbers on this page, Brian will be happy to help you with any of those. They provided us with all of this information. The next page breaks out the pharmacy claims from the medical claims and the other plan So you see, we have 2018 and 2019 plan years listed there for some comparison. The 2020 column is our actual claims so far this plan year, and then we have the rolling 12-month column. That's what our claims have been in the most recent 12-month period. It gives a real, accurate snapshot of where we're at. So since about 2014, we've seen our pharmacy costs rise significantly. In 2018, the pharmacy spend was about $206 per employee per month. In 2019, it went up to $228 per employee per month, and this current year, we're trending to end up at about $245 per employee per month. Morrow and One Digital suggest that a pharmacy benefits manager, like a company like Maxor, could help us save up to $421,000 in pharmacy spend annually. Those savings come from a combination of rebates coming back to the county instead of Blue Cross keeping those currently. Any rebates on a prescription stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield and do not come back to us. They have a great system of maximizing coupons. There is some steerage of our employees to lower cost drugs, if there's generics available that they're not currently utilizing. There's especially drug programs that greatly reduce the cost of expensive drugs by introducing grants and high-level manufacturer rebate programs. So this company has a lot of contacts in the industry, and they know where to find those rebates, they know where to find grants. So that helps our bottom line, but it also helps our employees as well. So that number, the $412,000, comes from Maxor actually taking 12 months of our actual pharmacy claims and repricing all of those claims as if they had been our pharmacy benefits manager for the past 12 months. So the next page is our renewal strategy. Currently, our claims administrator is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we do have a good relationship with them. Things run pretty smoothly. Our employees do seem satisfied overall. Unfortunately, for mid-sized employers like us, they do not allow for the kind of flexibility that we need to implement long-term cost savings, for example, using a PBM like Maxor. Morrow and One Digital have suggested that a move to a third-party administrator that will allow for more control to our approach, letting us reduce our costs while hopefully improving the employee experience as well. MedCost is one of these groups that they looked at. They seem to provide the best balance for us. Employees should be able to see all the same providers, which is very important. Our goal is that the biggest change they see is the logo on their card, and hopefully not be impacted much beyond that, while at the same time, we get to implement programs that give us a little more control over our cost containment. So, we've talked about the pharmacy benefits manager. On the next page, you'll see a couple of other programs available as cost containment strategies. Triumph Direct's healthcare navigation and Optum's transplant carve-out. Triumph Direct, in a nutshell, is a program that guides employees in need of procedures to locations that have high outcomes and lower costs. The transplant carve-out program transfers all of the risk to Optum and moves all of our potential claims exposure to them, so we don't even see claims or any cost from an employee needing a transplant. This also would reduce our stop-loss premiums. So, the next page, it lays out a cost comparison of Blue Cross Blue Shield and MedCost, the projected total cost for our current plan year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Then you'll see what Blue Cross Blue Shield has proposed for renewal with claims projections, and then you'll see what MedCost has proposed to us, also using those claims projections. The last page just takes a quick look at the rest of our benefits. We've not had a chance to really delve into that and to make any changes to our dental. It does look like the admin fees for MedCost for dental are a few dollars cheaper per employee per month, but we just have not had this, a discussion on what disruption might be for employees as far as networks go and things like that. So, we're not proposing any changes to vision or labor.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
The, so currently, the way I understand it, Blue Cross Blue Shield is the current administrator, and the reason why we're not, we're going to see a better benefit by going with the MedCost, because they farm out to the pharmacy that they own already, right?
Well, we could, yeah, Blue Cross Blue Shield, yes.
They refer everything to their own pharmacy. They're sort of making double the money.
Their administrator, yes. So they, they can work things to their own benefit as opposed to ours, and that's reflected in the fixed costs. You can see that they are a little bit lower, but that's because they can have that lower because they're keeping a lot of those rebates and things like that. So, in going with a company that allows us to use a separate company from them, we have more control over that aspect.
And our broker does represent Blue, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah. We see it, what we're looking for for pharmacy is transparency, and we don't see a lot of that with healthcare, and we've seen healthcare, I mean pharmacy costs, Blue Cross owns their own PBM, United Healthcare owns theirs, you know, Agnes owned by CVS. So, and it's, with this, and because of a lot of ACA, it's just the way they did it, they just increased profit over here to make it look better as far as, that means claims go, which means they can charge more premium. For you guys, you're based off of your experience, your claims, but they're keeping the rebates, and they're significant. So with a program like going to MedCost, we can use any PBM that's out there, pharmacy benefit managers out there. This is the one that fits best based on the claims that you guys have. It could be that in three or four years, another one comes along, and MedCost gives us that future flexibility to plug in programs that are going to benefit the employees and their dependents here, and that's just from a long-term, you know, financing, a long-term, you know, situation.
So in all reality, we're looking at possibly, what, $400,000?
Potentially, like I said, they, they took our actual claims, 12 months' worth of claims, and they ran them, processed them as if they were our benefits manager, and that is the number that they came up with. But if we had been with them in the past 12 months, that would have been that much less in pharmacy spend.
Ms. Woodin, what's our projected loss in the service insurance program over the next fiscal year, based on claims that we've seen and the numbers they looked at?
To the current year, we started off the year $2.6 million, which is lower than what our broker usually anticipates what our costs will be. At this point, our estimate is 3.0, almost 3.6, which is not entirely unusual. You know, we've had some good years, and we've had some bad years, and we've had some challenges this year with a lot of our claims. Some of that is probably because we've had some COVID in our organization as far as people that are covered. Some of that is probably because of, you know, some elective surgeries and things that were delayed, that might have happened in the last fiscal year that happened in this year, that it might have even out otherwise, and so it's going to be more of a challenging year for, for us than you would hope.
So starting July 1, projections, we're going to be about $1 million above what is budgeted, correct? Just, if it holds true, we hope it does.
On average, it's about right.
Is there, just questions for our broker? What other things can we implement as a county to help reduce that number? Are there other programs out there other than the healthcare navigation and the Optum transplant carve-out program? What would you recommend to the?
Well, there's, a lot of things as if we're better consumers, right? I mean, if we look at it, we'll go, if we're going to buy a new car, we do a bunch of research on that. If we're going to buy a new television, we know what we want, and we know where to go. As, as a whole, we're not good consumers, so we'll go, a lot of times, doctor says you need to go to this hospital to get an MRI. That's not the cheapest place to go, and I think people understand that. They never really kind of go back to their doctor and say, "Hey, is there anything I can do?" We might ask for a generic or a drug, we're kind of conditioned to that, and your claim report that. That's why the Triumph, I think what we'll see is that we're going to gather savings on the pharmacy. We're investing a little bit back to a Triumph as far as the concierge-type service, and the idea is that they're going to not only help individuals make better decisions, but we're also going to downlay, download claims there, so they can look at people with conditions and help them get the treatment that they need to mitigate any type of larger claims down the road. And I'll say, I've, I work with every company that's out there, and none of them on their own are very good as far as reaching out to individuals with chronic conditions. One, because you have your cell phone here, you're conditioned, if you don't know the number, you're not going to answer it. By implementing a program like Triumph, what we're seeing is a return on that investment, and people then being able to make inroads there and work with the individual. So, that's one of the ways to do that. Pharmacy is a huge, 2000, before ACA, pharmacy was any, from 12% to 15% of the overall medical claim spend. By 2025, and you guys are a perfect scenario, this can be 50% of your overall medical, of your claim spend. So by.
So 50% of our overall claims is going to.
It's true, it's going to trend that way, that's correct. And that's just, but you're not unusual with that, because just the cost of drugs and the shift from ACA, so I think implementing programs like, like the Maxors, if it's a PBM, will reduce not only the county's cost, but it will also reduce some of your employees that take high-level drugs, it'll reduce some of their costs as well.
Ms. Woodin, how many counties in North Carolina charge employees a premium, and what would be an average cost of those who do?
Based on the research that's been made, made available by the school of government, it appears approximately a third of the counties, so 33, charge a monthly premium to employees, and when you average out those 33, it is $53. That is charged on a per-month basis for those employees?
It's inevitable that, you know, free healthcare is a thing that's coming to the, going to be, come to the past. It's, I don't see how that, as a county, that we, as well as some of the other counties, can continue to take the whipping that we're taking in providing healthcare, and on and on and on, so I think it's something we're going to have to take a hard look at.
I'd like to ask the broker the question. What's, what's your opinion or take on counties and premiums for employees at some level?
I would say, and I want to probably just, not just county, but municipalities, that I, that I see that, I think the focus, I think you kind of actually hit it there, I think the focus has been to try to keep that paying 100%, but I think, pay it for the employee, and then if there's any contribution towards the dependence, it's more focused on children as opposed to spouses. If you look even broader with that, if you go outside of municipal business, a lot of employers are struggling right now, even though a lot of them had great years, I mean fiscally, and, you know, the last little bit, but the cost of healthcare is going up because of the cost of pharmacies going up, and so, especially right now, there's. And so especially right now, they're trying to avoid passing on any or additional cost to employees. But overall, unless they do something like what you're potentially looking at doing, they're not going to have a choice because they can't keep doing the same things that they're doing right now and expect to offer the same level of benefits at the same cost to employees.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, whenever you read, I'll make a motion. Chair base a chance to speak.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and take staff's recommendation to switch our, from Blue Cross Blue Shield to MedCost. And also, as part of that motion, have our county manager and staff review what other counties are doing and bring back to the board next month, any recommendations regarding what potentially a premium could be for an employee.
I'm looking at the insurance experts to make sure timing is good.
We've got the motion.
Hold a second.
We've got a second, questions, comments, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Very well. Ms. Presswood, we look forward to you coming back and bringing us some good information next week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next under appointments is, I'm D., the library activities update, and we've got Ms. Marion Brantley here with us, Mr. Marion Brantley here with us today to give us that update.
How are you, buddy? Good to see you all. So I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you, share some of the things that the library's been up to, and some of the things that we've got planned for the summer. Before I do, I first like to thank the board for their support of the public library. And also I'd like to thank the EMS department and our facility maintenance department. Thanks to you all, we were able to take the necessary steps to reopen our libraries to the public safely. So we appreciate your hard work and the tough decisions you've had to make. Like a lot of public libraries, due to the pandemic, we really had to rethink the services we could offer and how we could offer them. And in the process, we came up with a few new options. One was digital programming. I have a couple of library staff, excuse me, Megan Martin and Danielle Tilson. And normally they offer like a weekly story time. And they didn't waste any time, they started videotaping themselves, reading story, like picture books and doing activity rhymes. And they were posting videos of them doing like crafts. And they developed these craft kits so they can, so parents could take them home and do them with their kids. At first, we weren't sure how, if this was really helping or not, but the craft kits would disappear really within an hour. And we received a lot of feedback from grateful parents. We appreciated the county offering some sense of normalcy and some sense of routine of seeing Miss Danielle and Miss Megan, and especially when everything seemed to be really turned upside down. So I'm really thankful for Megan and Danielle's hard work. Another service we offered is curbside pickup. It's funny, it was, this is something that we were planning on doing before the pandemic, but we weren't really sure like who would be interested in participating with it. Then of course, after the pandemic, everybody's offering curbside pickup. So I think little did we know that we had spent pretty much our entire summer and our fall and winter running books and computer printouts to people waiting on their cars. As of April, we've helped over 6,000 people collect their materials this way. So it's a popular service. We also adopted an electronic resource, tutor.com. It's a database that connects students with a tutor, a live tutor. They can share a screen and the tutor can help with the usual subjects like science, math, and language arts. But they can also help with things like college application essays, as well as resumes and cover letters. Again, like, like curbside pickup, we had considered before the pandemic, but we just weren't sure, you know, how many people would actually be learning remotely. Of course, little did we know. So we're about to add another tool in the toolbox for parents and teachers to support their students. We've got a lot of help from the school system to help promote it. And so every month, there's more and more kids participating with tutor.com. Last month, we had over 30 completed tutoring sessions. So we're really proud of the database.
I've got a number of referrals from the school system.
Yeah, they'll be on their website. And Mark Harris done a great job as well as the faculty. Anytime they have a question, they call us up and we're happy to help. A couple of months ago, the state provided both libraries with outside Wi-Fi as part of their Park Learn initiative. It's the same system that's provided at the Mountain Gateway Museum. So patrons pulling into our parking lots, just need to sign into the Wi-Fi signal named NC Guest, and it's pretty easy, pretty quick. And then recently, Carmen Melin, our branch manager at the Old Fort Library, has partnered with the North Carolina Arboretum and to help make the Old Fort Library become an Eco Explorer hotspot. Essentially Eco Explorer is a citizen science program for kids in grades K through 8 and combines science exploration with kid-friendly technology. Kids can use the tools and the backpack that we provide to explore around their backyard, see what kind of wildlife lives there. They can also use a trail camera that we provide to photograph the wildlife and to take notes on locations, time, and species that they observe. And when the backpack is returned to the library, Arboretum staff will review the data and submit all approved submissions to a website called iNaturalist Network, which is run and used by scientists. As of April, the libraries, we welcomed over 15,000 children and teens and adults back into the library. We've also had over 80,000 materials checked out, like picture books, magazines, and bestsellers. And we've answered over 4,500 questions about devices people have brought in, or questions about how to use our computer. One of those computer users is a gentleman who's a member of the Rotary of Marion. And every Thursday, he comes in and we help him send it to Zoom so he can attend his meetings. And so of course, we're glad to help. Looking ahead, staff are preparing for our annual literacy festival, the summer reading program. The program lasts from June 8 until August 6. And the theme this year is Tales and Tales. In that enormous stack of papers that I gave you, you'll see several brochures of stuff that we're offering for children, teens, and adults. So yeah, staff have come up with a lot of fun and educational programs that are free to anyone who wants to participate. And the goal each year is to always prevent that learning loss that happens between the school, school years during the summer. And year-round, we're always trying to help preschoolers be kindergarten-ready in time for the fall. And let's see, and I do, in the packet, you'll see there's tons of like kids programming, but again, we also offer programs for teens and adults, so everyone in the family can participate. And finally, we've also been working pretty hard on getting a bookmobile. At the very last page in your packet, you should see what the bookmobile should look like when it's delivered. We hoped to have it by the beginning of April, but unfortunately, due to the pandemic, there have been some delays. So they told us that it should arrive by the last week of June. And on its own, the bookmobile will include like Wi-Fi, laptops, scanner, and printer, and of course, books and audiobooks and DVDs. And so far, we've gotten some great support from several local fire departments who'll let us use their locations as library stops. And we're looking forward to partnering with other county departments and organizations like DSS and NASH and possibly MAGA. And so overall, I'm really proud of my, the library staff, and they've been able to accomplish a lot this past year. And I feel like we have a lot to look forward to thanks to your support and community support. So I appreciate your time.
Questions, comments?
You could really increase the, there was, the user system if you did the term papers for sale. You could have a lot more users. No, I'll just say this, there's so many different things you can do in our library, and it's very positive. And I know I've got three girls and they love to go to the library. And I was looking at some of your flyers here, teen summer cooking challenge. I know that there's probably a lot of people who'd use that adults too. And all kinds of different things. So Ms. Chairman, I think that the library's done an excellent job and during the pandemic and what they're offering, and their staff is doing a great job. I just wanted to say that, Ms. Chairman.
I agree, and thank you, Mr. Brookdale. We appreciate the hard work you're doing.
Thank you.
Next under I'd need, we've got Ms. Susan Baker, who's tonight, and we welcome her to come up and give a presentation. So welcome to the podium.
Hey, thank you. Marlin already called me out, but I was going to say, I told them that I wanted to follow the bookmobile around and bring a little art and craft kind of, I just throw it on my previous and follow the bookmobile around. But I came to talk to you about our roof at the MAGA, at the McDowell Arts Council building. But real quick, I just want to say a couple of things. Over the pandemic, we have put $10,000 into the middle schools and the high school through virtual programming through the English, with the English classes in middle school and the creative writing in the high school. And that money has paid artists to do virtual residency. So that's something that's happened. We also, early in the pandemic, put together art kits that were delivered through the Foot Hills Food Hub, Central Unito, and the community forums. And just recently, we got a grant from McDowell Health Coalition to help us purchase supplies for more art kits. So we just delivered some of those to Central Unito, and we're going to have more going through Foot Hills Food Hub and the forums as well, through food distributions. Something else we've done is created a resource wall on the outside of our building, and it's just papers like coloring sheets and art activities. There were patterns for masks, things like that, and anybody could come through and pick those up. And we've distributed about 100 of those a week, which is people coming in. Things, yeah, Marlin said all this good stuff. I thought I need to get up and say some good stuff too. But as far as our roof, so our building is quite old. We love our big building, 22,000 square feet. The building actually has four roofs. And if you look at the front of it, you can see the difference in the brick design. So it was actually two buildings originally. And there's two roofs on the top floor, the second floor. There's one in the back, and then there's a fourth one that runs the length of the hallway. The one in the back, we replaced about five years ago, and that was around $20,000. Back this winter, the upper two roofs leaks happened, actually leaked on my computer, had to replace my computer. But that total for that roof, $22,000. Obviously hardship during this time. We've lost a lot of money in our programming. One of our greatest revenue streams is through our children's theater and all the sold-out crowds that come to see our plays with all the children.
How much did you estimate you lost just for the...
Initially, we were looking at 25,000 because we couldn't do those plays. And mind you, the children's theater is free participation. All of, there are some children's theater in the region that the children have to pay to participate. Our is completely free. As of the past few years, we made it free for all participants. But you know, it's worth it because their shows sell out. We make all our money on ticket sales. But anyway, so the children's theater is where we have lost a good bit of revenue. Some other events and fundraisers, we weren't able to do, Potter's Market for one. But, so it's, it's a little bit of a hardship to, we're surviving. We've been able to keep our bills paid and our salaries paid, but that roof, $22,000. We have raised 9,300, yeah, $9,300 through GoFundMe, so that's all just community support. We have...
City's been 5,000, TDA has...
Well, the city hasn't said yet. I just went and asked. But TDA and Chamber have both, their boards have approved 2,500 from the Chamber and 3,000 from the TDA. So we were looking, I think if the county can help match some of that, we will meet our goal of $22,000 for the roof. And this roof, by the way, was dated to 1980, so it was in much need of getting replaced. And now we have all new roofs, so. Any questions?
Yes, you got five, we saw you got five roofs, they said.
Okay. There's an old elevator shaft, so there's a roof about the size of an elevator. So I don't, I don't, I've never seen that roof, it's way up there. But I'm just going to hope and pray that it never leaks. It won't cost $22,000 to fix that roof. We can manage that one.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and address the 2,500 dollars for the roof.
Second now.
Got a motion, second, any discussion?
I was, yeah, I think too, you had presented to the city, right?
Yes, I haven't heard yet.
And when did you present? How long has that been that they're...
It was last month, at their last...
It's time for a challenge.
Yeah, I would say I would challenge him with ours, but...
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, and a challenge, so no other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys. Moving now to old business under I'd need, we've got Parks and Recreation Department update, and Mr. Wood, if you'll lead us out on that, please.
Yes, sir. A few items here, and if there are anything that comes up in the discussion, I'll be glad to address it. First, in your memo, you see that Ms. Huskins, her last day is this coming Friday, so her retirement is effective on the 14th. It was noted in the, in the paper, I believe, that we were in the hiring process. We do interviews this week, and hopefully we'll have a candidate, hopefully hire very soon, and hopefully as soon as possible since it is a pretty busy time supporting the baseball, softball, and, and all the other great things going on such as the, we hope to have a swim season this, this summer, et cetera. So definitely we'll be in touch with that and fingers crossed for a wonderful process. Also, it's been reported some items of concern in the Old Fort facility. And I have communicated some of those updates to you over the last couple of weeks, but the items that were brought to it, the board and staff attention, as far as restroom sanitation and lighting and things have been addressed. There were some broken windows that have been replaced as well. So really appreciate the effort of, of staff. Mr. DePoister is here, and he wouldn't want me to, but we'll want to say publicly that he and his staff did a wonderful job of supporting the recreation department staff and getting some of these things accomplished. So really appreciate that effort. Again, I think still in Mr. Keller's mantra, we're all part of one team. And so if a department needs help, it's not just, well, that's their problem, we're going to find a way to solve it together. So it was really appreciated. And so there's still some things to address there. You know, bleachers that need some boards replaced and things. So not everything is, is done, but it's definitely in process. But definitely the ones addressed in the paper, or raised in the paper have been addressed. Last month, moving to the recreation center in Marion, you authorized the purchase and installation of sound baffles in the gymnasium for that center. We do have two quotes in. Ms. Huskins had said there was, one other vendor had been on site within the last two weeks, but had not provided a quote as of today. And so if you would like to put a cap for, for staff, we can move forward with an authorization for a purchase, or if you'd like to, or if you'd like to wait and bring back the third one, it's up to you.
Was the third vendor, have they been contacted?
Was the third vendor, have they been contacted?
They have, they're just waiting, I don't know if they're waiting on a supplier on their end to provide a quote or not, but they have, based on my understanding, have been on site.
Do you think you could possibly get that within the next week or so?
We'll try very hard, and I've, we've offered to call and drive or whatever to get a quote.
It would be my thoughts, cuz this is getting to be pressing, it would be my thoughts to give it two weeks and then move forward.
Okay.
Whether you've heard from them or not, what's?
Make a motion then, babe.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second on that, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
And I'm gonna start, because it's gonna be part of this Parks and Recreation Department, referring to the shooting range in this department. And so several of you have been on site. The biggest barrier to completing that project has been the bridge over Muddy Creek. So the abutments are complete. The bridge is being manufactured primarily off-site, and is, will be trucked in within the next couple of weeks, according to the contractor. And so, once that's on site, the contractor that's doing the most amount of the grading will be able to get on the other side of the creek. They're able to get some of their equipment now, but not all of it. And so, once that bridge is in place, they'll be able to get to the other side and do the lion's share of the work. The office building, the grading building for, for patrons will be, is out for bid right now. We're anxiously waiting to see those bids come back. The cost of building materials is of a concern, of course, and so we'll just wait and see how those turn out. If it's, if within budget, we'll bring that to the next meeting. If not, we'll probably re-bid it. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we had talked off and on about a grant opportunity that would need to be filed, recreation, for recreation program or facilities need to be identified. Can you bring the board update on that, Mr. Wood?
Sure. There are several different grant opportunities for parks in North Carolina and for, for public grants. There are probably innumerable private grants. Two that come to mind that we have looked into for our parks are the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, Part F is shorthand, and the other is LWCF, which is Land and Water Conservation Fund. The latter is a federal grant, and so it has not always been available. It has been for the last year, and so Washington will announce an availability of a grant. And then it is funneled through the states. The states will do training opportunities, they will actually do the application process, and the award based on what other funds are available. October 1st, it's the deadline for LWCF this year. It seems like a better fit for upgrade and rehabilitation of existing parks, more so than Part F. I mentioned before that we've talked to Fred Blackley, who is the landscape architect who works for Chuck Amrick. And Mr. Blackley has visited both of, both of Maple Leaf and the Recreation Center property in Marion, and has done some very preliminary sketches. Spoke with him by email today, and he wants to, to meet and, you know, with staff and get some, get some things back going again, even have been sidetracked with some of our other projects, but would like to get that process going if the board is okay with maybe one application this fall.
Okay. I'm good with that. I mean, free money, what you get it and use it on our parks and recreation programs? I'm all for that. Free money's good.
Can you answer the ownership? Do we own the land for the Old Fort Park up at the Catawba River?
Okay, the Old Fort property, which is the ball fields and the swimming pool, is owned by the town of Old Fort. We have a lease that was initiated about a year and a half ago. It was actually a renewal from what was a 10-year lease. This was a five-year lease, and so we're about three and a half years into that lease. And so that lease provides that the county is solely responsible for the keeping and maintenance of that facility from a cost perspective as well. But it's, to answer your question, yes, it's owned by the town, but it's maintained by the county.
But now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wood, in that lease, either party can submit within 60 days their desire to exit that, correct?
That's right.
Personally, I think that Old Fort ought to help fund anything we do up there 50% since they do own it, and we're, we're just a steward operating a program on their, at their facilities.
I personally think it would be, honestly, it would be in the best interest of Old Fort, really, just to, to give that to the county, let the county take it and go with it. And I'm seeing a head nod in the back, but I think that would be to their best interest. I mean, be more, more load on us, I'm sure, but I think that we could pay closer attention to it, and I certainly don't wanna get into another one of those scrapes that we got into a.
Month ago.
Month ago. And, and the county get blamed for everything that went on when there's, there's two entities involved, you know, so.
Correct.
But that would be my wish, and maybe that's something that I would like to, negotiation that I would suggest.
Is that currently in, in the agreement? Is there a provision where the town of Old Fort is required to police that? Because our understanding is there were homeless people coming in there and setting up camp and had been there for a period of time.
Months, they have been there for months.
There is not a policing provision, no, sir, not in that particular.
Doesn't the city limits go up to there?
I think, not to my understanding.
Kim, do you know?
I do.
They have, with it being town property, they would have the ability to.
Either way.
Patrol it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it would, it would be a mutual aid situation with the sheriff's office.
I will make a statement that I have seen the Old Fort Police picnicking up there two different occasions, two different weeks since the fiasco. Another thing of, of something that's going along with what's been discussed as far as a little bit more accountability as the money's taken in, and I realize that we're going through a transition with Parks and Rec, but I do think that there would be a little bit more accountability if we could, could make that happen, and I am in agreement with what Vice Chair and Chair have suggested.
Ashley, the county pays for the lighting and the power at the facilities right now?
Yes, sir.
How much revenue comes into each one of the programs? Do we have a record of that?
The, the youth activities organizations in each community, the way the setup is currently is they, they operate the concession stands, they take the funds at the gate. Those funds are intended to be put back into the programs, also to pay for officials, umpires in this instance. And so there's not an expectation that they pay for electricity and those sorts of things. The county pays for utility, utilities and general maintenance, but, but they are to put it back for primarily umpires, as well as any needs for the teams.
So as far as accountability, the revenue coming in, we don't have any accountability as far as that goes.
That's county level.
Mr. Two, I'll let you go ahead.
Might I understand then that we are the ones that, that the county is the ones responsible to furnish the tissue paper, towels, water, whatever is needed in the restrooms? Or should that come out of those funds that are gate collecting?
That's right. The, the youth activities are responsible for disposable items like that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a motion. I would like the county to request, county staff to request a finance or treasury report from all county youth activity boards, just so we can be able to that accountability.
Second. Got a motion, second, any other discussion on that?
That's good.
Great idea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
It doesn't appear to be in town limit.
There isn't any? It's not.
It doesn't appear to be in town limit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood, one question I've got.
Sure.
For staff. Big League Camp, they are operating, of course, baseball. And my understanding is they had one day where everybody went to that, to the fields, they registered, they got the teams divided out, and it seemed to work pretty good. Right now, our method is parents go to locations within the communities, is that correct? To register their children to play baseball?
That's correct. The, and there's a lot of history there that we won't bore you with unless you'd like to be bored, but a lot of that goes back approximately 30 years, where the decision was made at one point to where the county would not be the entity that would collect the funds to hire the umpires, to buy the uniforms, to, to do all those sorts of things that, like you're referring to, the other entity. And so the communities, they do the registrations, usually at the schools that they're closely associated with, geographically at least. And so registration, I believe it's $40 this year, is collected from the parents. The county receives a portion of that for liability insurance that is purchased, as well as a registration fee for the Cal Ripken slash Babe Ruth organization. The county does not collect anything beyond what that amount is. That is retained by the communities for uniforms, baseballs, et cetera, for, for the program.
I think it's beneficial for the board to look at, we want, we want our parents, these children, and the kids who want to play, we want it to be as streamlined and as easy as possible for them to register their child, their kid, to play whatever sport it is, and so they can have the best experience. I think that the board probably needs to look, when we get a new director, and have staff give recommendations and moving forward, as to how we might can make it a better process.
That may just be communication.
True.
I'll just say again, I'd like to see it in the hands of one or the other, either the city of Old Fort or the hands of the county. I just, I think it would run a lot smoother and cut down on a lot of the confusion that we have and have had. So that's my opinion on that. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, you want us to revisit then, have, have staff contact Old Fort to say they're in desire to do?
I would like to see that. I'd like, I would like to, for staff to sit down with some of the Old Fort representatives and, and talk the possibility of either them taking the, taking it back over totally or giving it to us and letting us.
I'll reach out.
Okay. All right, moving along. I D, more facility updates, so we'll let you take the floor again, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. You have, did you provide this to everybody or just me?
Yes, you.
Okay. In your packet, there is a drawing prepared by Fred Blackley, I referenced him earlier, the landscape architect that works for Mr. Hamrick again. He is a very knowledgeable individual in the area of landscape design. Many months ago, you had authorized a demolition of two buildings, it was actually the prior board authorized demolition of two buildings on South Garden Street, which is mostly done right now. There are some remnants of some walls that are left, just to kind of keep the earth from collapsing, with the goal of having this building removed for parking improvements. And so one of the, on page 40, there is a proposed layout of, of parking that Mr. Blackley was able to fit in that space, and these are, I'm sure, code-specific, you know, parking spaces that are not something you would have to park a compact car in. He was able to fit 16 spaces in that, in that area, which we have about five cars that can park perpendicular to the road right now, and he has 16 in there, and there's more than adequate enough space to pull in and back out, et cetera. We had explored accessing part of our property from an adjacent property, and we're not successful in negotiating that access. And so staff has looked at this, and on page 41, you can see a grading plan, if you want to get into that much detail, but 40 gives you the layout of how the spaces would work. And if you approve with this plan, staff can contact the contractor to resume, resume work there to have parking expanded for, for that facility.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for staff. The wall, that would stay up incorrect?
Can you be more specific at this point?
The wall is holding, you referenced, it's holding the dirt back.
Right, so if you look at page 41, there, well, you see on 40 as well, there's a darker line on the, on the bottom of the page. There's a wall to retain that would remain there, otherwise the rest of it would be earth and just be graded. But just one wall would remain.
All right. Good. Pleasure, Howard.
I make a motion, we approve the plan as presented?
Second. Got a motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any vote?
Do, one update and one more action item under facilities. Mr. Hamrick has the bids out for the North Main Street building, what was the Kirksey Building. Bids will be open on June 3rd, I believe in this room. There will be a pre-bid meeting in a couple of weeks, but they have sent it out to all the, the bid companies, the newspaper, et cetera. And so again, fingers crossed on that. They will have good bids on June 3rd, based on, based on his estimates. So hope to have, have those before you for the June meeting.
Good. That concludes the facility updates.
I do have a, an action item, perhaps. And so for maybe about a year plus, we have, the county has rented its office space on West Court Street. That was formerly part of the Damren Bergen Law Firm. It was originally secured for the, the Public Defender Office, which is now in the courthouse complex. We took advantage, you allowed us to move part of probation parole staff from crowded quarters, and no quarters in some situations, to this space. Our hope was to have more movement on renovating the second floor of the administration building. We're, we're just not there. There's some condition issues at the building that we're not able and ready to, to bring staff into without some renovation. And so we are asking that the, the lease on that West Court space be renewed for another year, to allow for that renovation to happen. In addition, our stated goal, maybe a voted goal, actually, has been to remove the current EMS building once the new headquarters is in place. Probation does bring along with vehicles, and we're at a parking space, even with the 16, it's still at a premium on court days, and so this would allow a little bit more time for that building to be removed for additional parking.
What's the lease amount, Mr. Wood, remind the board?
It's at 970 right now. I did speak with the landlord today, and he, he said he would keep that in place through October, and then he would anticipate going up to probably 1,000 a month at that point. So you've got about six months of about 70 more dollars.
He won't do a month to month, nor will he do a six-month lease.
No, sir, I asked.
Good. Let's close the board.
Make a motion, we approve the lease.
Motion approved, go to second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I would personally like to see a timeline for the renovation of that second floor.
Trying to have that next month.
Okay. Okay, I want to press that out.
Aye.
All right. All right. Next is illegal solid waste ordinance discussion. Mr. Wood, if you want to leave us open.
Yes, sir. Last month, there was a vote to have an ordinance brought before you that addresses, and we call it illegal solid waste. It may not be the best term for it, but, you know, litter essentially, but also an instance that was referenced of, maybe more appropriately called the illegal accumulation of solid waste that is sometimes seen. And we're, we like to think we're pretty speedy and respondent to board directions. We didn't turn around an ordinance in three-plus weeks, but this is an ordinance that had been worked on previously by the planning board, that had been tabled by the prior board. And so before it was sent, something was sent back to the planning board, we wanted to bring the last draft that we had to you for any thoughts and comments, and then we can send those to the planning board with any further direction you might have to bring back for further consideration, if you'd like. So you have the document, excuse me, with, you know, that lays out, I won't read the whole ordinance, of course, but just the, the purpose for folks that might be curious. Provide guidelines to ensure proper handling, disposal, and storage of litter, trash, garbage, and debris, just to try to cover all the terms in McDowell County. To deter unlawful disposal of solid waste, trash, garbage, litter, or debris. To abate illegal dump sites and encourage reporting of litter and illegal dumping of solid waste. And so the county has a, an ordinance that governs the, the operation of our facilities. Sometimes it veers into this area to some degree, but this is mostly related to litter and illegal accumulation out and about more so.
This has been a big, big problem, and it certainly has upset me drastically to see some of the things that you see on the sides of the road. And I would wish that at some point in time that we could see the need, if nothing else, to put another deputy in charge of just sitting in these problem areas in a hidden position and trying to catch some of these people, or even going as far as putting cameras up in, in these areas and trying to catch some of the people that are doing this litter and, you know. I've seen people just throw refrigerators out on the side of the road and truckloads of shingles and everything out in that area where I live. It's ridiculous and it's disgusting, and I would like to see the county, even if we have to spend some money to do it, and I would like to see this brought to a halt.
As commissioner, one of the biggest things, and the most often things that we cause on, I get caused on, is, is litter.
Yeah.
People just, and, and I get more calls on, not necessarily people throwing out the car windows, but neighbors who have, neighbors who just pile trash bags after trash bag after trash bag in the back of their pickup truck that's not tagged, sitting on the property, and it stinks, and it's, you wind up 50, 60 bags sitting there. And, and that leads me to what, a question I've got concerning the ordinance. It'd be section eight, page five, and the fee, the turnaround time. I know she said, once complaints called in, the ordinance does, then an officer goes out, because that's who we're enforcing. They've got 90 days. It says, within a reasonable time period, not to see 90 days to remove the trash. Another 90 days of piled-up trash. I think that's too much. I want to, my, my recommendation, or my motion is going to be to reduce that to 30 days. Once, and once the deputy goes out and makes him aware of the situation, they don't need another 90 days to sit there and look at the trash.
I agree.
So that's one, one thing I want to do is amend that section.
Any other questions or comments?
I have had a couple of calls. Apparently in December, the people that are trying to do the right thing, taking trash to the dump, used to get paid $5, uh, used to have to pay $5 for, for that, and now it's gone through and paying by the ton now, and it's around, I think, $60 a ton or so. And it's trying to do, they're trying to do the right thing, and I just wanted to make sure that we are taking everything into consideration. I 100% agree with you, 100% agree with you. If people are storing stuff out at their house, if people are throwing stuff out the window, stuff like that, that has to be addressed in this right here. But I would like to have discuss, future discussions, not tonight, but future discussions on, is our county trash situation, is it making money or are we losing money on that? And having to, and try to evaluate the entire program, but I do think that we do need to look at this and reevaluating what it is, so that we can make the right decision long term. Because I don't want to make a, I don't want to make a quick decision tonight to, if we're losing money, what do we do? And, and the way it's been presented to me, you know, we're paying property taxes and it's not being, that's not taking care of trash, and different, different comments. So I just, I, I do want to make sure that we are fully educated on the trash situation. I am 100% for stopping this trash, for supporting the Sheriff's Department, for making sure we're not storing stuff on our property, our neighbor's storing stuff on our property 90 days, and it's smelling and all this other mess. So I, I just wanted to make that statement.
And I was in my yard the other day, and my neighbor, I was just riding a board. He was out in there's nail box. I just stopped to speak to him real quick, and he mentioned the fact that he and his son had went to the landfill and had just done some, some trash out of the basement and maybe a little whatever. And he said it wasn't the stuff that, you know, you got to pay for, is how he termed it. And he said it should have been $5. So I've, I've talked to Mr. Woodin too, Patrick, and told him, I said, you know how the interstate's got the big billboards? We need to be informed as commissioners, and the, the young lady who's down there in that booth at the scale house, I asked Mr. Woodin if, if that person has a list that says, okay, this is C and D, is that construction demolition? Is that right, Ms. Woodin?
That's right.
We talked about, okay, what is construction demolition? What, what materials comprise that? And, and just get a list of that, so she'll know for her benefit, and then we need to educate the general public on what is C and D. Like, if you do a new roof on your house, that's considered C and D, correct, Ms. Woodin?
That's right.
So.
Or replacement of carpet.
Or, or, you know, they need to know, what, what is, are you remodeling your kitchen? Is that C and D, which I've been told it is? So we need to educate, so people will know, because these contractors who come in and do these jobs, they need to be ones hauling it out, not the poor old homeowner who's hiring the job out. And then, in this case with the shingles, this guy that hired the job out, loaded up on a trailer, we go trailer, he had hauled down there and had to pay $130. And you need to pay to dispose of that. That's a whole house, roof, shingles, we pay.
When I was, when I was working as a general contractor, I had to pay when I hauled that stuff to the landfill. I mean, sometimes my bill would be 150, 200, 250 dollars, you know, to dump. And I've done it legal. And there's so many today that are driving down there, and they're, they have their trucks filled full of building materials, and they're saying, and a lot of it is guys that are unlicensed.
Unlicensed.
Unlicensed workers running around the community, and they are just going down there every time they have a load off the job, and they're saying, oh, this is from my home, you know. And it, you know, people abuse the system. It doesn't matter what it is, there's always people going to abuse the system, and so.
And there's a difference, Ms. Chairman, from cleaning out your basement. You know, we all got junk in our basement right now. We'd go home and back a truck at two and load up and wouldn't even miss it. That's different from the C and D. And I think that we need to let the people know. We need to educate ourselves so we know, and then we need to educate the public so they can make the best option for them, so they'll notice, say, Mr. Contractor or Mr. Unlicensed Contractor who's doing that, my kitchen remodel, I'm not going to put that on my truck and haul it down there, because you're the one getting paid to do the job. So you take it and dispose of it.
The ordinance defines construction or demolition as waste or debris or solid waste resulting solely from construction, remodeling, repair, or demolition operations on pavement, buildings, or other structures.
We need a big old sign down there, right there before you start up the hill, that says, this is C and D, and, and you're going to pay whatever per ton that the ordinance costs for. That way, they might be turned around. But this guy told me, my guy, Moyn, he was Moyn, he said, what's going to happen is people will start dumping alongside the road, you'll have even more trash dumping alongside the road.
The sad thing that's happening, and I'm going to say this, maybe I shouldn't, but the sad thing is that's happening, is these people are charging the homeowners to haul this debris out, and the homeowner is paying for it. And then they're going down there and saying, oh, this is from my house. It's, it's just, I don't know, people want to beat the system, no matter what, I guess. I don't know. Anyway.
But one thing, though, the, I want a question for staff. The littering out of your car, okay, just make sure I'm clear on this, per this ordinance right here that we're looking at, is that the $50 per violation per day? Is that correct, Mr. Woodin?
So on page five, littering, dumping prohibited. So we are limited as a county what we can do as a fine. So the maximum that you can do for any level of fine in, in total is $500. So for any instance, the maximum is 500. Now, the state littering law is actually higher than that. And so when we've talked to the School of Government before, their recommendation is if there's a state law that covers an item that you're wanting to regulate, for example, or make illegal, whatever, in this case, if the state law is more restrictive, like it is in this case, you know, let the state law, you know.
But should we not copy that into our ordinance? I mean, it's a state law, but should we not put that in our ordinance?
I mean, you could say that, you know, also state law says you can't litter, and you may be subject to a state fine, for example, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be our violation at that point. It would be, they're being given a ticket for littering, violating state law. Does that make sense? So we can do an infraction for littering on the county level based on this ordinance, but the maximum fine is going to be lower than what it would be if they were given a littering ticket from the state. So in that instance, it might make more sense for Highway Patrol or whomever they see littering to not given a violation of county ordinance with state law.
But on our ordinance, though, the $50 a day and $50 per day, that cancels a violation, even though the same truck with the same trash is $50 a day, right? Accumulating at $50 per day. But you're saying it caps out to $500?
$500.
As a max? And then it goes to an unpaid lien on the.
Right. So in the 90 days you were referencing earlier, a lot of that language comes from nuisance abatement statutes, we've talked about before somewhat. And so a lot of that has to do, I'm not sure if Fred is here, with due process. And so in a nuisance abatement situation, a lot of times, you'll, you'll see that to where a judge or a court, a judge would say, well, what kind of due process did you give this property owner? Well, they had 90 days. She went back and said, well, they had 30 days to abate a nuisance. In that instance, they might say, well, that's not long enough, perhaps. So that's where, based on what I've seen, the nuisance abatement ordinances tend to be a little bit longer, because some judge probably somewhere said, 30 feels too short, 90 feels about right for a nuisance. I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying what is probably how it ended up being 90 for due process.
Well, you may get a hardcore judge that says 30's too much, too.
That's right.
From my take on it, the board, you know, you can do what you want to do, but I, I will approve, I want to make a motion to approve the document with that change from 90 to 30. And is there, I'm open, let me back up.
I just want to, I just want to send a message out there, and Mr. Conley can quote me on this, but I want to send a message out there to those that love to throw litter out their windows while they're driving down the road, and those that don't have any respect for their neighbors. We're going to try to put a stop to it, and we're going to spend some money to do it, if that's what it takes, but we're going to stop it.
My motion stands. I'll go ahead and make the motion, change that from 90 to 30 days.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All papers say aye.
I would like to also ask if, could ask, actually, if he could encourage the sheriff to write the Sheriff's Association and also get with the police chief in, in the city to ask if they would write the police association for the state to address by letter to the governor, so that the governor would then help assist in cleaning up, because it's not just countywide. It's, and I do think that, and from the commissioner's point of view, maybe writing it to the commissioners there too, the association, so that we can, if everybody's writing the governor and asking for support in helping clean the state, I think that the, we will have a better opportunity. That does not, I am with you, Chairman, on helping fund a little bit more in addressing some of the trash here in this county. But if we could do those different associations and write letters and encourage the sheriff and the police to write their associations to write to governor, because we got, we've got to get some help statewide.
And tied at DRC, we had directed staff to write letters to Department of Corrections, well, to Cooper and to Heist, Green, and Burger, or whoever the Speaker of the House is right now, stating that we want to see inmates out there picking trash up again.
There is House Bill, there's actually two, but the, the most recent is House Bill 700 that's been introduced. It's a bipartisan bill, which is unusual sometimes these days. It's titled the Bring Back Inmate Litter Cruise. This bill is somewhat different than one that's been introduced earlier in this session that they do appropriate funds to do so. It is not, appears to be in committee right now. The deadline for it to pass the House is May 13th. Otherwise, it's dead for this year, because that's the crossover deadline before, so it doesn't pass by the 13th, the Senate cannot take it up. So I don't have any intel on how likely that is, but I've seen some, maybe some movement, at least in one, one side of the legislature on it.
Okay. Moving along to new business. Out of May into new business, opioid lawsuits, seven hundred and thirty. Wood.
Yes, sir. Couple of months ago, you had a presentation from an organization that mentioned the opioid lawsuit. And a quick history, the county entered into what is called a multi-district litigation. It is not a class action lawsuit, and don't ask me to define the difference, but it is a multi-district litigation where you're suing, it's an active lawsuit, but you're suing manufacturers and distributors and others associated with the production and marketing of opioids. Again, that's been in place for about three-plus years. That case is in the, it's the Northern Judicial District of Ohio Federal District, and there are about 3,000-plus organizations that are suing those same parties. Probably ever since it was entered into litigation, there's been discussion of settlement between the parties on either side. There have been ongoing discussions for a very long time, and those still continue at the, at that level. Fast forward to fairly recently, the Association of County Commissioners, they initiated a process here in North Carolina about a year and a half ago to have five county commissioners, five county managers, and five county attorneys on a committee to discuss what you see before you as a memorandum of agreement. That would be. you as a memorandum of agreement. That would be signed between 100 counties and the Department of Justice in North Carolina. That would essentially agree on a cost, or on a sharing of any settlement funds that would come to the state. And so it's a very, very long and detailed document with parameters on how funds could be spent. There are some options presented. There's a Plan A and a Plan B, actually. The Association of County Commissioners has had several webinars, et cetera, for counties to, you know, voice their opinions on them. I spoke with Mr. Coates a couple of times since this has been released. His recommendation is to receive it, read it, digest it as best as we can, but not act on it as of yet. Again, we do have outside counsel. They are asking that the party's not signing yet, to give them more time to evaluate it. So there's no big rush. And so our recommendation would be at least wait until June to give more time to look at this and understand the impacts.
Okay, no action required. Question, comments? Moving along to item B, American Rescue Plan discussion. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. In March, the U.S. Congress signed the American Rescue Plan, which was signed by the President shortly thereafter. This is passed in response to the COVID pandemic. The difference between some of the other initiatives that have passed in prior months is this had direct funding to counties with no pass-through to states. There's also a large difference in the amount of funds that have been made available to local governments. And the counties that have been made available under this bill, at this point, for McDowell County, the appropriation is $8.8 million in response to this bill. And there are four large parameters responding to mitigating the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, towards negative economic impacts, providing government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue, make necessary investments in water sewer or broadband, responding to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency. And so that's essentially the bill language right there. That was about it. Today, about an hour and a half before this meeting, I've tried to read it, I promise, about 150 pages. 151 pages was released. It's called an interim final rule. And so, no, I haven't read it all yet, but it provides more guidance. And they'll probably do a two-page FAQ within the next day or two.
Can you forward what you got to on this this evening?
Sure, absolutely. Probably will put you to sleep very quickly, but.
It's been long awaited to receive.
That's right. Somewhat like Christmas, but you don't get to open the presents yet. So staff will need time to understand 151 pages, any additional guidance that comes out from U.S. Treasury. It's our expectation that even though this is federal funding, it's coming directly from the U.S. Treasury to the county, there's no state pass-through. The state will probably still have some guidance on how we are to account for it financially through a special fund, more than likely. So we're not quite ready to start writing checks. And so we don't have enough information to lay out greater options for you, except for what's in here. I would recommend that we just provide as much information as we can to where you can provide some feedback to us on how you best see the funds being spent in this county.
When's that to be spent by?
December of 2024.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
Moving along to item D. No, we've got C here in the Second Amendment Sanctuary. Updates on that?
Yes, sir. So last month, you noted that, I believe it was early 2020, the Prior Board had passed a resolution declaring the county a Second Amendment Sanctuary. And so you asked, or directed that this be on the agenda tonight. And so you have on, I believe it's page 124, it's, I believe it's the same language as last year. The title is called Resolution Reaffirming McDowell County a Second, so Second Amendment Sanctuary. So you're reaffirming essentially what the Prior Board had said.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Very well. Item D, Glenwood Ruatan Road closure. Question. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. The Glenwood Ruatan, for maybe about four or five years, has partnered with the individual, the organizations that do a festival in the southern part of the county, Nervane Mountain Road. They have the Gold Rush 5K. And so they're going to have that on June 5th of this year. And counties do not have a lot of involvement with public roads. But one thing you are allowed to do is close roads. And so Prior Board has, boards have done this for this incident, the event.
I make a motion we approve the road closure.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, administrative items, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. And I'll go through these as quick as possible. The first item, you approve every year the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council allocation plan for the agencies listed on page 130. Has he approved?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Von Cerro on this. If she don't mind us to tell a little bit about what's going on, that'd be great. We love that.
I have been to two, well, I've enjoyed two of the meetings, and they're very involved in this. They're very, they seem very concerned about the use of this county and keeping up with issues that affect those children. They do reports. They give reports of what they're spending, how it's been spent, and why it was spent. Each different amenity does that at each meeting. Do, I see a huge benefit in this program, in all the programs they're involved in. And I think it's well administered, and I don't see any waste in it whatsoever.
I make a motion to be approved as presented.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, next item, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. This is entitled the Whitnall Properties Bankruptcy Settlement. You've previously discussed this in closed session. Our tax attorney recommended that this be approved, the settlement be approved in open session. This involves Whitnall Properties, who owned property off Foxwood Drive outside of Marion, declared bankruptcy several years ago. A settlement was negotiated for the delinquent taxes over a number of years, and that has been ordered into the bankruptcy court, and payment has been received. So it's a little after the fact, but we do need to do it in an open session.
The request is what?
To approve the settlement.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure. The 113,000, what are we going to net out after attorney fees roughly?
I believe the attorney fee was about 5,000.
Is that money then restricted to?
It's posted against the property taxes that were due by the individual.
So like in this instance, you would have a number of prior years that they're being applied to?
Got you. Okay.
Next item, Mr. Wood?
Oh, we had a, we had a motion second.
We had a motion second. Who did you make the second?
I made the motion.
I made second. Okay. Got a motion second on this. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next item.
You have EMS write-offs. We're asking that you approve.
Let's move to board.
Make a motion to approve the write-offs.
Second. Got a motion second. Discussion.
And these evolved, I mean, these are exhausted. There's nothing more. They've been through the question agency, correct, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir.
Okay, motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Wood?
Before we get to amendments, you do have two project budget ordinances. You have one for the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Courthouse Project, which should be the last one.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the Courthouse Renovation Ordinance, Project Ordinance, and the Coronavirus Ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next.
And you do have several budget amendments. Get to the numbers. You have GF 50 through 63, FD 1, FD 2, DS 01, SB 4, ENT 2, UNT 2, SR 2, and SI 2, July.
Okay, let's move to board. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to slow down a little bit, bring the gear down. God knows my question asked earlier today about this, but there was, just for information purposes, the concealed carry permit fees, the budget is $50,000, and we've had such a rush to get concealed permits, that's another $50,000. Is that correct, Mr. Wood, that was brought in as a revenue?
It's my understanding. Is that correct?
And the Medicaid Home Harmless, that is money that was at a dollar amount that now has been spent, because a lot of these were being paid for out of the Medicaid Home Harmless, correct?
That's right.
Any other questions, comments?
One thing I want to say, too, on the GF 57, counties cannot shop the machines that we use for people's swipes, wherever they may be in the county. And we've written and had our association put that as a priority to try to give us the ability to do that. And I was just going to record again, say, I don't think it's fair for the state not to let us shop around a service, whereas they can shop any service they so desire. And I just want to go to record saying that again. I'll say it every year.
I agree. Okay. Moving along, Mr. Wood? Items C.
I make a motion we approve.
I'm assuming you did as presented, make a motion on it. Okay. Second. Got a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that's all the administrative items.
Yes, sir.
Next is the, I'm seeing tax matters. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. You do have the typical discoveries, releases, refunds, and write-offs. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I've got one. The J.K. Thomas Company do business as Highway 55 Burgers. I just don't think that's right for him to get off scot-free. And I want us to go ahead and pursue that individual and with whatever remains necessary to collect the money he owes his county. I'm not ready to charge that one off, in other words.
That's $3,000.
Mm-hmm. It means sort of the principle of the thing.
And I want to note, that's the prior operator, not the current.
Yes, correct. Thank you. I would approve as presented minus that one.
Okay, is that a motion?
Second, and that's my motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve all but that one. Second. Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Next item is board comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have the TDA, McDowell Tech Community Police Force Trustees, and the Jury Commission. They all have vacancies. This is the first reading for all.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. Now, next on the agenda is citizen comment. I think we had someone signed up on citizen comment. Okay. Mr. Todd, we have citizen comments. Mr. Staff, reports of communication?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I meant to do this when Ms. Keller was here, but we had stated as a board, we would look again at the numbers and see what, as far as if a spike or did or did not occur, as far as masks being required for county employees to wear. And over the last 30 days, I think there's been averages six new cases per day. And I think today, Ms. Keller, we've got a total of six pending cases is all we have now currently, if we count it.
Seven new cases, six pending tests.
Six pending tests, and seven new cases. Okay. With the 34%, 33% vaccinated now, and the low number of positives, I'm prepared to make a motion that we go ahead and state that any county employee who has been fully vaccinated has the right to not wear the mask if they so desire. Now, if they still want to wear it, that's fine. I'm good with that. But I do want to give the opportunity for those who are fully vaccinated, in light of the numbers that have been reduced, and statewide, the trend is way down, hospitalizations are way down, and, you know, we're, as a board, we're encouraging people to go get your shot. I mean, that's the best way to beat this thing, get your shot. And, you know, I know all board members have done that. But I'll make that form a motion tonight, that any employee who has gotten the shot does, is not required now to wear the mask.
So, but those that haven't are still required to, is that?
If they don't have the shot. My motion is that anybody who has a shot is cleared once they present the verification, being the card, that they're not required to wear the mask.
I'll second that motion.
But I want to be clear on what you're saying. Only those that have.
Correct.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second on that. Any discussion?
Staff, ask.
Say something. Go ahead.
Is it all right to recognize our director for comments?
Sure.
Sure.
Do you have comments?
I'd like to take questions.
We have, we had supposed.
Questions will be, is one shot or fully vaccinated, fully vaccinated, two doses of Pfizer, Moderna?
Correct.
Or one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson?
That's right, Ms. Keller. Fully vaccinated, it was a two-shot, both shots, and the card is Johnson &amp; Johnson, one shot, they're good.
Does CDC provide a guidance on?
So the current guidance for CDC addresses the vaccination of individuals in outdoor settings. If you look at the guidance that was issued on April 21st, fully vaccinated people, this is from the CDC website, visit with other fully vaccinated people indoors without wearing masks or physical distancing. They preface that at the bottom. Fully vaccinated people should continue to take precautions in indoor public settings, like wearing a well-fitted mask. This is a very gray area that they approached here, and it continues to list out. Some of the guidance is even as far as, as late as yesterday, Dr. Fauci was on, and said that they do expect additional guidance to come out for indoor settings for individuals who have been vaccinated. So what we know about full vaccinations is there is a small chance of breakthrough infections. The shot isn't 100% effective. We know that from the very beginning. You're looking at 94, 95% effectiveness on the Moderna and Pfizer. What I've said is, I can give you what the guidance CDC says. With regards to employment law and those other types of things, this is a question for HR and others, because I can't give you that guidance. That's not my wheelhouse. And I think for, as a department director, we just need to have that clear guidance, the power to have this information presented. Is it in a legal realm for it to be presented? And I just want to make sure from the department side that I'm clear of how this is supposed to be done.
Sure. And Mr. Wood, you had a rest second. We talked about that today.
We've got a lot of department heads here, thankfully. Maria and I have discussed Maria and I have discussed this, going back to some of the prior discussions to other months. And we come back to, a lot of times, the attorneys, this is, sorry about the sun there. Maybe Tyler can move over. Get a little bright on you, but the attorneys sometimes don't have, they don't have really good advice and guidance on this topic, because it's clearly unprecedented. This isn't something they do on a daily basis. And so counties are struggling with what cities and everyone else, you know, what is allowable or not. I mean, you can have different options. Some of the things I will point out, we are bound in certain areas that you cannot override. Two that come to mind relate to transit. There's a federal mandate that passengers and drivers on our transit vehicles, since they receive federal funds, must be masked the entire time, whether they are vaccinated or not. That's in place through September. We are also bound with the tag office, that's a contracted function with the state. Employees and visitors, patrons of the tag office are required to be masked until such times, there is no order from the governor. So with the federalism being the way it is, if we follow the letter of the law, those two departments, for example, would not have flexibility on mask-wearing at this point. So otherwise...
You know, you got, there's no issue there. I mean, it is what it is. I hear you.
There are some opinions out there that are different. I'm just reporting what's out there on the governor's mandate. I'm not an attorney. I don't think Mr. Coats is here, but I've read it several times. It gives leeway in my read of it. I've seen other people say that it does not give leeway to local governments under the current mask mandate. He has not provided exemptions for vaccinated individuals outside of the mandate at this point. So it's not clear on what you would allow, be allowable under the mandate or not. And so I'm not saying that's good or bad or indifferent, I'm just pointing out some of the facts out there.
I do think we'd want to see CDC at some point change that guidance. When you look at Director Malinsky from the CDC, her comments in the last several weeks, it points to where this is going to be losing, as far as the requirements or the recommendations for masked individuals. In two of the comments, the emergent data confirms what many of us thought would be the case, not only the vaccine stops it tonight at COVID, they make it highly unlikely that someone can even be infected at all. We do know that there are some breakthrough infections. It's very, very small, minute. And then she goes on, significant immunity that's in gender two weeks after a single dose of the two-dose vaccines, and the preponderance of evidence, of course, of the fact that vaccinated individuals are not able to spread the virus. And I think that's going to be key in the guidance that's issued. When you look at, and what I've told a number of folks is, when you look at our situation in EMS, I've got an 80% vaccination rate of full-time EMS person, which is extremely high, when we compare ourselves to other EMS agencies across the state and even healthcare agencies in general. If you have two individuals that are completely vaccinated working in a single station, there's very little risk at all, minute. They still have to wear masks when caring for individuals, wear masks in healthcare facilities, because that's the requirement. But we wear masks outside of a pandemic for certain types of situations. So internally, we have mask policies. We've been a lot stricter during the pandemic, and I think our internal policy at EMS could be dialed back some from what we're doing presently. But we've done that to protect our staff through the pandemic, and that's what we've done. That's where we're at from federal guidance and what the state guidance says, but I do expect CDC is going to change this.
May I move slightly?
I got a motion on the board.
In a second.
At the current time, I'm going to have to, I hate the mask itself, but I am going to stick with the CDC guidelines at this time. One, I may have health issues that I want to protect myself from. I don't want to catch the stuff. I've been vaccinated, I've had both shots, and I do appreciate that. I do think that the, I'm not qualified to make the call, but I'm going to vote against the motion.
Comments? A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Let be known, double lifted hand. All opposed? Very well. Motion carries. Your adjournment carries.
Effective date today or tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, just when every motion went in, it was approved.
We will communicate with staff tomorrow.
Okay. And I certainly have a deep respect for the COVID. You know, Mr. Keller knows for a fact how serious it was with me, and I certainly do respect others and hope that they would respect me, and, you know, and I just feel like, the situation right now, this could prompt some of the others to go ahead and have the COVID that haven't had it and probably wouldn't have it. It just, it could prompt them to go ahead and do it. So hopefully that's what will happen. Okay. We've got a, everything's been accomplished here tonight, and I think that we can accomplish a, a motion we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow for the adjournment, you do meet this Thursday with the Fire Commission, I'm sorry, with the City of Marion and presumably the rescue squad at 5:15. And so we'd ask that you adjourn to that, which is before the Fire Commission meeting is 6:30.
Well, Mr. Chairman, make a motion we adjourn to the dates and times as stated by the...
It's the Harold Smith Building.
Okay. Got a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.